All right, everybody, welcome to, today is December the 13th, 2016 at 7:00 PM, Barts Town City Council member. And, going to number one, to recognize groups and then individuals, but I'd like, what I'd like to do is go ahead and invite Donnie Gill and Tammy Moore, and they are with the Lincoln Trail Health Department, I guess, Health District. And if you would like to come up and, they want to talk about the syringe.
No, we're not going to be talking, sir. They're just here on behalf of the Pacers, any questions?
Oh, okay.
They're just here to witness the resolution.
Okay.
Right, sorry, sorry.
Mayor, if I could remind us. I'll let Councilman Williams have it.
I'm sorry. We had, we had someone give a presentation several months ago regarding the needle exchange program, and they're just basically here this evening to answer any questions we may have, because I know we have a resolution on the agenda that I'm totally supporting, so.
Well, I'll let them do this where they can, if you need the same thing, I'll leave it to them, or if it's okay with council, I'll leave it to number one, and do the resolution and get this, then act, that way they don't have to stay till the end of the meeting. Is that okay with you guys?
And on behalf of the council, I'd like to introduce the resolution with the title and then go straight to the resolution side instead of reading all the whereas's, if that's okay with everyone. Okay. R-201609, a resolution regarding the creation of a syringe access exchange program. Be it resolved on this date, the 13th of December, 2016, that the Barts Town City Council believes that a syringe access exchange program would reduce the risk of spreading infectious disease through the availability of sterile drug injection equipment for the above stated reasons, and let it be further resolved that the Barts Town City Council approves the Lincoln Trail District Health Department to develop an evidence-based phased syringe access exchange program in Barts Town to prevent and control the spread of communicable diseases associated with injection drug use, and in so doing, advance the public safety of the city of Barts Town, and let it be further resolved that the program implementation and progress shall be reviewed by the Lincoln Trail District Administrative Staff and the District Board of Health.
Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to make a motion. Like to approve resolution R-2016-09 regarding the creation of a syringe access exchange program, and I yield the floor for a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Copeland. Discussion? Does it have discussion? Well, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
What is the, as far as the cost, is there any cost to the city, the city taxpayers for this?
No, it comes from our public health dollars. It will not cost you anything.
Okay. Do you have the numbers of like, say where the rise of infectious diseases, let's say HIV, others, do you have, do you have, say, from where it was from 10 years ago to what it is now, do you have any numbers?
We do have some numbers, as recent as 2014, Nelson County, your hepatitis C rates are above the state average, and you know hepatitis C is associated with the sharing of needles, and it's above the national average as well.
What is the most?
Those numbers come from 2014. Let's see, you increased from 2.7 per 100,000 in 2007 to 8.9 per 100,000 in 2014, and that's the most recent data we could get from the Centers for Disease Control.
Is hepatitis C, is that what is most common in Nelson County right now? And do you have them ranked like Hep C or HIV, do you have, do you have that ranked?
I would say most common, as far as STDs, gonorrhea, chlamydia, and then probably, then probably Hep C and HIV, but that's hard to tell because so many people are not tested, and that's one of the things that they'll do at this needle exchange. They will offer and do testing.
Pretesting.
So, that is a really good thing, because I've had several people stop in at the Health Department and ask for clean needles, and I was not able to give those to them, and it caused a lot of frustration on their part and my part, and they basically left saying that they were just going to go use their dirty needles or whatever, wherever they could find them, you know, which causes all kinds of, like HIV, Hep C, it causes all kinds of skin infections, and those people ultimately end up in our ERs, and then, you know, that costs, that costs the taxpayers a lot of money, so.
And if we say there's one life to this program, it's, it's worth it.
Absolutely, and people who access needle exchange programs are five times more likely to seek treatment, because they're going to come in and we're going to see them repeatedly, form a rapport with them, and start planting the seeds for treatment, and then maybe one day they have that kind of light bulb moment where they're tired of living that lifestyle and they seek help.
And you'll have a counselor with you, right?
Yes.
From Communicare, so they will always have access while they're there to mental health, which is another great thing, because if you get them in the right stage, then, you know, you could possibly save a life, and it's better than doing nothing, which is kind of what I feel like is going on now. You have to start somewhere.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams and a second by Councilman Copeland. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, let's go back up, now I can, we'll go with received or recognized groups or individuals, Pat, you had your hand up, okay. We was in the middle of a motion, that's why I couldn't call anyone.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Anything else from the public? No? Go to bids, contracts, proposals, the downtown SSESTV named Clean Project, the change order. I guess you all seen that.
It seems pretty straightforward to me. I'll make a motion to approve the change order for the sum of $18,908.15 for the sewer clean out and inspection.
I'll second it.
First and a second is on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No. Is that a no, Mr. Simpson?
No.
Oh, thank you.
The other one is, Kevron's a professional service contract. I guess you guys have seen that, is the, that is for the, is that for the water plant, is that what that's for?
For chlorine, transfer.
So, we're going to start transferring.
Chlorine, dechlorine. Which is something we've put in the budget.
Basically, we have requested proposals to, for engineering services, and we went through the selection process and selected Convirens, and this is just going through that process formally, authorizing them to execute the work, and their fees are going to follow the rural development fee curves and everything associated that are recommended that we follow, especially if any outside lending agencies, KIA organizations are going to be looked at for funding, which I think we have the intent to do so. We want to make sure we follow those processes. So, I don't have, so your agreement, if there's a question about why there's not a dollar figure set for the design at this point, it's based upon the actual construction costs of the project, so it's percentage based. So, if a project, and before you design it, you don't have a good feel for what that percent, a hard number, but that's going to be it, but that way it keeps the project from, in the design expenses fair, and there's a whole scale and percent scale based on the value of that, that more expensive the project, those percentages start kind of going down a little bit.
Is the project, is going to take a year or so to complete?
Correct. We anticipate Convirens beginning preliminary design work almost immediately, they're already in the process of gathering existing water plant plans for what infrastructure we have existing at the plant, and, you know, in-ground typing and so forth in order to get that design set up, and probably within the next couple of months, they'll move on with final design that will then go to the Division of Water for approval, and will have construction estimate at that time, and then look to start the loan process as well. My goal is to have, to be able to maybe bid the project this time next year, maybe even sooner, but we'll kind of watch that timeline.
Well, that being the case, I'll make a motion. We offer as a major agreement to an agreement with Convirens for the engineering work to make improvements to the water treatment plan to convert our secondary disinfectant to chlorines.
I'll second it.
First and a second. Discussion?
She had time to say, let her finish it.
Just one other quick thing, too. We just recently were awarded to KIA a loan, was granted for the other Watership of the Flit project that's currently in the budget this fiscal year, and we were really excited that we anticipated getting around a two-and-a-half percent loan interest rate, and we ended up getting a 1.75 interest rate. So, that's a really good loan interest rate on that, on our money, and will probably save us over $100,000 over the course of that loan. So, we're hopeful that we might be able to get that same interest rate through that same program, provided it's available at the time that we, we apply.
This is my, oh, yeah.
That's all, sir.
Okay, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted. Okay, let's move on to Castle Cove Phase Four Water Service Request. I guess you all have seen that. Anyone have a motion?
Okay, I'll do it. I'll make a motion to approve the Castle Cove Phase Four Water Service Request.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Simpson, he had his hand up, I seen him, I heard you, I seen him. Have a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted. There's no HIB, DRB, or plan zoning correspondence. Let's go down to number six, review of the regular city council meeting, if you want to look at that, and if everybody's in agreement. With that, I'll take a, maybe a motion by unanimous consent.
Yes.
If everybody's okay with that, I'll adopt a motion by unanimous consent on the regular council meetings on 11/22/2016. Special council meeting, which was B, which was 12/6/2016, if there's no objection, I'll be by unanimous consent to adopt the minutes. Thank you, and the financial report, we have nothing, ordinances, no first reading, we've got a second reading, is B-2016-16 Luxco Distillery Annexation.
I'm surprised they don't, I'm surprised they don't want to fire up the camera for this one. Summary of ordinance B-2016-16, an ordinance annexing certain territory consisting of approximately 68.34 acres located along the east side of Kentucky Highway 245, corridor running from the existing boundary of Kentucky Highway 245 to and including property owned by LFL LLC located at 3050 East John Rowan Boulevard and adjacent to the city limits, pursuant to care of this 81A400 that seek. This ordinance annexed into the city of Barts Town, Kentucky, a certain unincorporated territory which is adjacent to the city limits to wit, a certain tract of land located on the east side of East John Rowan Boulevard, aka Kentucky Highway 245 bypass, approximately 08 miles north of the intersection with US Highway 150 in Barts Town, Nelson County, Kentucky, and more particularly described as follows. Commencing at a set one-half inch iron rebar, one-half inch rebar with cap stamped wool 3742 set rebar henceforth in the east right-of-way line of Kentucky Highway 245 bypass, variable right-of-way, and having state plane coordinates of northing 2178090.30, easting 1733380.05, Kentucky south zone and corner to attract a land conveyed to Home Team Holdings LLC of record in deep book 483 page 621, and plaque cabinet 15 slide 41 in the office of the clerk of Nelson County, Kentucky, thence leaving the east right-of-way line of said bypass and running with the north line of said Home Team Holdings LLC, south 441001, east 54.03 feet, to the true point of beginning, said point being a new corner revised track one conveyed to LFL LLC of record in deep book 517 page 1, and plaque cabinet 17 slide 142 in the clerk's office of four said, thence with a new division line across said LFL LLC, the following six calls, north 233326, east 28.12 feet to a point, thence north 061122, east 167.64 feet to a point, thence north 233236, east 525.39 feet to a point, thence north 390807, east 146.31 feet to a point, thence north 264128, east 211.27 feet to a point, thence north 031610, east 159.70 feet to a point, a new corner to said LFL LLC in the south line of tract of land conveyed to Tepco Inc. of record in deep book 245 page 161, in the clerk's office of four said, thence with the south line of Tepco Inc., north 892303, east 931.38 feet to a found sycamore stump on the north bank of the creek, witnessed by a found one-half inch rebar with a cap stamped witness 2225, south 600750, east 50.11 feet from the said stump to a corner to Tepco Inc. with James and Elizabeth Donahue Revocable Trust, lot 60 of Tulamore Estates, phase 2C of record in deep book 472 page 534, and plaque cabinet 13 slide 53, and Robert and S. and...
Yes, question.
Robert and corner to Joanne Philietto's lots 58 and 59 of Tulamore Estates, phase 2A of record in deep book 421 page 344, and plaque cabinet 10 slide 5, and the clerk's office of four said, thence with said lots 58 and 59, south 132447 west 196.35 feet to a found 58-inch rebar with the cap stamped hibs 2981, corner of said lots 58 and 59, thence adjoining David M. and Elizabeth N. Wheatley's revised lot 56 of Tulamore Estates, phase 2C of record in deep book 440 pages 535, and plaque cabinet 11 slide 176 at approximately 182 feet, and Tulamore LLC of record in deep book 414 page 599, and plaque cabinet 15 slide 157 at approximately 482 feet, south 502540, east 886.88 feet to a found one-half inch rebar with cap stamped hibs 2981, corner to Tulamore LLC with, and a tract of land conveyed to Home Team Holdings LLC of record in deep book 483 page 621, and plaque cabinet 15 slide 41 in the clerk's office of four said, thence with the west line of Home Team Holdings LLC, south 225356 west 1423.84 feet to a found 58-inch rebar with cap stamped hibs 2981, found rebar henceforth, corner to said Home Team Holdings LLC, thence with another division line across LFL LLC, south 292955 west 336.61 feet to a point, a new corner to said LFL LLC, and in the north line of the tract of land conveyed to Home Team Holdings LLC of record in deep book 483 page 621, and plaque cabinet 15 slide 41 in the clerk's office of four said, thence with the north line of Home Team Holdings LLC, north 714613 west 166.95 feet to a found rebar, thence, north 714613 west 166.95 feet to a found rebar, thence, north 661408 west 333.75 feet to a found rebar, thence, north 430556 west 248.51 feet to a set rebar, thence north 304858 west 531.22 feet to a set rebar, thence, north 441001 west 4544.25 feet to the point of beginning having an area of 68.34 acres or 2977056.5 square feet. The above described tract of land is a portion of parcels 1, 2, and 3 as shown on the amended minor plat for John B. and Nancy G. Ballard, not currently within the city limits of record in plaque cabinet 17 slot 142 in the Nelson County Clerk's Office. This ordinance are parts of ordinances in conflict herewith or revealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following the publication and summaries required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, City Attorney.
I'll make a motion, except B-2016-16 Luxco Distillery Annexation, as read. Yield the floor to second.
Second.
I have the first by Councilman Butler, second by Councilman Copeland. Discussion? All in favor?
We need the individual vote, sir.
I'm sorry, individual vote, I'll start with Councilman Simpson.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion's adopted. Okay, thank you. Cemetery Committee, special meeting minutes. Did you guys review, if you have any questions? Number 10, who want to finish business? Number 11, we'll go down to number A, which will be the M-2016-16 Social Media Policy for the City of Barts Town. We've talked about this on several occasions, so.
Yeah, I read it. Somebody refresh my memory on why we're having, what's the problem, who's sponsoring this? Who wants this? Who's asking for it? Who wrote it?
I am.
Okay. What do we, what's the problem we're trying to solve here?
A situation that was presented at one of the clerk's meeting where, of course, in regard to records retention and/or open records, a situation that may occur in regard to social media, where not only city employees, but also city council, including the mayor, if they should have a social media, a social media account, and they use it for city business, then of course, it's a situation where I have to be aware of it so that records retention can be addressed, and also if an open records were to come in, that we would be able to contact the individual in reference to their, I guess, their program and be able to access We don't have a policy for the city of Barts Town in regard to social media, and it is suggested that we have one on the books.
Is this wording from some other?
I got it from the Kentucky Department of Library and Archives, and then, of course, they had, they didn't include Twitter, LinkedIn, Snapchat, Tumblr, Instagram, and Flickr at the time, and so there's been others that have been suggesting since we started talking about this, but of course, we just say examples of social media, and we just use a few examples instead of listing each and every one of them.
Well, it seems to me we're trying to do, to do two things at once, because we talk about the city of Barts Town websites or Facebook pages, which is, which is one thing, and then we talk about individuals, how they use Twitter and LinkedIn and Snapchat and so forth and so on. It just, I don't know, it seems kind of muddy to me, because this, it talks about coordinators of social media sites, we'll monitor the content in the social media sites, the coordinator, I assume, being like a department head, and then it says the city reserves the right to restrict or remove any content, and I'm like, who's the city? If the person who's doing the site is the department head, then who is the city? And, to me, it's interminally, I mean, the city has a, we have a Facebook page, or we have a, we have a website, which is controlled by somebody in the city, not strictly controls that, but that's controlled essentially by the mayor, whoever works for you, somebody in your sphere, and that's not, I can't go in there and put stuff on that, I mean...
But there are people, I think, do, and let me give you an example, like the fire department at the present time.
Yeah.
Is, is getting a social media policy together, and I think you've, the chief juror is at the present time is getting a social media policy together, and this is kind of being grouped in.
Well, if the police department has a website, he's in charge of it. He controls what goes on there. Nobody else controls what goes on there, script and form wrong, so.
No.
That's, as it turns out, that might be a little naive, Councilman Hagan, because we had a recent issue here with the Human Rights Commission, where they lost control of their own website.
Okay.
The person who was the, the...
Administrator?
Administrator, thank you, was no longer on the board, but, so the board didn't have control. So, when they went to try to take that down, the only person on the account was that person, and they couldn't take it down.
Okay.
So, they lost control of their site. What this in part would do would say the city of Barts Town has control, and so if somebody from the city of Barts Town, if somebody went out and tried to take control or keep control of a website, we could go to one of these sites and say, we have under this policy, we have control, and I don't know how much that would influence them, honestly, based on the trouble we had. We had a lot of trouble with that, and we finally got it resolved, but what we're trying to, I think part of this is to try to do is to say officially who has control and...
And that was another same issue that happened at the police department, is that they lost control of their website, and, because when people weren't there, they were still in control and they weren't there, and we had, and it was hard to shut it down because they weren't in control.
Well, that's why I asked what problem we're trying to solve, Barbie's trying to solve the records retention, and you're trying to solve a control problem, those are two separate topics.
But you still have records retention in those websites.
If it's used for city business.
And they actually, the police department does use that as for city business to catch people or to, that kind of thing, you know.
It's a blanket, it's a blanket thing trying to address all issues that arise when dealing with social media.
Well, if we...
That is true.
Okay, if we have one for the city, wouldn't that cover the fire department and the police department as well?
Yes, sir.
So, why do they have to have a separate one?
Because they're going to add additional to it and other departmental policy.
There's some...
There's some probably more specific to what they use it for.
As you've said before, Fred, Facebook is going to be the...
I understand the philosophy, but this, the way this is written, it says everything and nothing at the same time, as far as I'm concerned. It really, it talks about, we're talking about two different things, talking about Twitter account, which the city doesn't have a Twitter account, an entity, people have Twitter accounts. So, how are you going to control? We're trying to do two things at the same time. We're trying to, we're trying to, trying to control Facebook pages and websites that are, that are controlled by the city, that are developed by the city, that are used to disseminate information. Then we're talking about social media, which is Twitter and Snapchat and other things, which the city doesn't have a Twitter site, the city doesn't have a Snapchat site. To me, it's two separate things we're trying to do.
Well, what if, Chief Juror, if I can use you as an example, so you're the new one, so we're going to use you, what if he has a Snapchat, or a Twitter, or whatever those others are, and he starts making comments publicly about job, about his job, or about Bardstown Police Department, and it infers that, I think this policy would allow us to be able to have that for public records. And I think, is that not correct?
That's what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
And I'm not saying he has that, I'm just using him as an example.
I'm done.
In reference to the councilman's page, how would you, how would you get the material from them? What would be the policy to retrieve those documents?
In regard to open records? I'd still have to rely on the council, the councilmen, to provide those for me.
So, would you have the council provide them for you, or would you have the council come in and sit with you to retrieve those records?
I, I will rely on the councilmen to provide the records for me.
Okay.
Mayor, do you want to discuss the other option?
What's that, what's going on?
If they aren't comfortable with this, is that a...
No.
Do you want to...
I don't know.
Oh, if they are uncomfortable with...
Explain that. Do you explain that?
I know that we've been trying since May of this year to discuss social media and its need for control, and so, if the council is uncomfortable with the proposed municipal order, then we have a section, a separate option for the mayor to apply it for city departments only. And he can do that as an executive order without the council's approval. And so, we'd like very much to get this on the books for the city employees, to get them covered. So, if you're unwilling to accept the municipal order as submitted, we already have in place one ready to go by executive order for the employees.
I like that idea.
Well, and understand, still, open record. You, you cannot pass, you know, that's the one thing that's really kind of, I think it's a little bit, and I guess I'm old school, it's a little bit frightening that, how much we can delve into, into this life, but if you're, if you're in a discussion city business, that's subject to open records, as I've said on numerous occasions, so. Doesn't, you know, if you just recover the employees, it doesn't mean you all are in the clear, just so that everybody's aware.
Again, the fact Chief Walker and Chief Juror are in the process of having one department, it's probably going to be a little tighter. You don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think that's what we discussed, so...
Should we like to take this off the agenda, council?
You want to take it off? You want me to do it by executive order? Or do you want, do you want to vote? I'll look at her. How do you want to do that?
I'm very settled, I think.
Can I get a consent? Ms. Copeland, how do you want?
Executive order.
Executive order. Okay. That's what we have. Let's move on.
Okay.
M. two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one, the City Vehicle Use and Assignment Policy, if you see that. Again, what's brought this around was, for the last year or so, since I've been in office, that was one of the issues that I wanted to really look at, is the amount of vehicles that we have, the use of the vehicles, who has the vehicles, how they've been used, and where do they go? And it was just a type of management-type thing, to see how, you know, if we save money, is, is the vehicles being used in a way that we could save money and not be used correctly? So, a couple of broad range of why I was looking at that, so here, and we've come up with this, with Risk Management, Risk Management Greg Ashworth, he's also looked into it, as far as the risk management side of it, the liability side of it, and with him sitting on the board, the Risk Management up in the Kentucky League of Cities, this is kind of where he's at with it.
Yes, it's all right with the council, I'll just introduce it in regard to purpose and enforcement. We won't need to go in, since you all have been informed about it at the working session.
Can we discuss anything, or...
Certainly, during discussion. Municipal Order M. two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one, City of Bardstown City Vehicle Use and Assignment Policy. The purpose is, the operation of vehicles is necessary in conducting much of the city's business. This policy establishes requirements governing the operation of city-owned, leased, or rented vehicles, and the operation of personal vehicles while conducting business on behalf of the city. Enforcement of the directives and regulations contained within this policy shall be the responsibility of department directors and the mayor. Such responsibilities shall include the development, monitoring, and maintenance of these policies.
I'll make a motion to approve Municipal Order Number M. two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one regarding City Use of Vehicles and Assignment Policy.
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Butler. Discussion, now Ms. Copeland.
Yes. Thankful for Greg Ashworth working on this. In reference to the vehicle assignment, within the vehicle assignment, there's fuel cards. Chief, can you make sure that every car, every vehicle has their fuel card in it?
Yes, ma'am. They can't, pardon me, they can't fill up the vehicle at the beginning or the end of shift without that card.
Okay.
To the vehicle.
Okay, so you have corrected that, because it was said that they didn't, sometimes the vehicles wouldn't have their cards in there, and that's why they were filling up two and three times.
Those vehicles were what we call the pool vehicles. We have a vehicle that's out of service, they'll take the pool vehicles, they do not have cards assigned, they'll use a card from their own account.
Okay, so every vehicle, so can we have that in there? Can we put that in there, though?
I could put it in mine.
Okay.
Mine's going to be even more stringent than what the city has.
All right, then, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're looking at changing that also. So, that will be an update for later, on, on fuel cars. We may not do it like we had it been, and as soon as I can get that worked out, I'll let you know about it.
Thank you.
We have first and second, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion's adopted. We've already done the syringe access exchange, so let's move on down to the Council members' comments, City Council Travel and Training Policy.
Okay, I was going to discuss the training policy that we have. However, since it is going to be another calendar year next year, I think it would be appropriate to discuss that starting next year.
Okay. Kentucky League of Cities Officials Academy? Who had it on?
Councilman Copeland.
To the council and the council-elect. The Kentucky League of Cities is offering the City of Council, I mean, excuse me, City Official Academy, but they also offer other continuous training throughout the year. And I am not a spokesperson for Kentucky League of Cities, but it would be who, the council, to take those training classes. When we stop learning, we stop growing, and none of us are better than some of us. And so, none of us can be more educated than the other. As a team, we can go forward together and, and work, and, and make this cohesive. And the Kentucky League of Cities offers these trainings, they're specialized trainings that you go to, and they're, they are interactive, so you're able to speak in these sessions. And they pertain to all cities, not just one in particular. So, I'm hoping that Bardstown will become more active in the academies, and the conferences, and the trainings that they have to offer, because they are good, and we can bring education and training back to our city.
Okay. So, the cemetery...
I'm sorry. I am so sorry.
Is it my turn? Ma'am? Yeah, I thought I could give everybody an update on what Tim was doing on the investigation we talked about. I met with Tim yesterday, he sent out a request for quote to four attorneys, he received three. As we talked about the last, the last meeting, he gave those to me Friday, Thursday, Friday. I went over them, with him on Monday, and as I said I would, I went through the three pretty carefully, compared them to what he'd asked for the bid to be on. One, I think, is, I picked one I thought was the best, I talked to the fellow today, I called and talked to him, and Tim, he's going to be sending you something by the end of the day, by the way. I talked to him about sending, let's say, a sample of a contract that he would sign. The guy's qualified, and his background is in this type of law, elections, and city government, and those kind of things. He had a pretty short, when, it's a pretty short time for him he could do it, and he can't start till January the ninth, but he said, thought he could, he said he could do it in about a week. Of course, he hasn't gotten started on yet, but he thinks that shouldn't be a problem. His price is, I hesitate to give the price, because it depends on how long it takes, but it's in the thirty-five-hundred to five-thousand-dollar range. So, what I've asked him to do is to send us a, to send to Tim, a proposed contract that would, again, lay out exactly what he's going to do, it's something that we would sign, and he's proposed he could start on January the ninth, and it would be finished by January the eighteenth, assuming everything might, you know. The way Tim laid this out was really two parts. One, as we talked about, was determining if the activity that took place was done by a city council, a city council, a city employee or an elected official, does it reach the stage of being illegal, or is it unethical? That's the first piece, and that's a matter of reviewing state law, city law, federal law, and that, he feels like he can do it pretty sure, you know, in a matter of days. And then he would come back to us with that information, and say, "Okay, here's what I found, now, now what do you want to do, council?" So, it's kind of a two-phase thing. So, we can, and then he would determine, we'd know what the, by then, we'd know what the first part it costs, and then we'd know, we'd have an estimate of what the second part would cost. So, what I've asked him to do is send that to Tim, and for you to review it as, before you, and then you could present it back to us at the next meeting, after you've reviewed it, and say, "Yep, it looks okay from your standpoint," and we'll know what, then we can all look at the, at the contract and decide if we want to go forward with it, so. That would be at the next meeting. So, that's where we are.
So, it actually could cost the taxpayers over five-thousand dollars?
It depends. He felt like, you know, you have, you have to really think about putting a number on before they get started, but from what he'd seen and from his experience, he thought it was, he thought five-thousand dollars would be a reasonable assumption.
So, Fred, do you want me to put it on the agenda for under contracts?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to vote, or put somebody else in charge of this investigation, since Fred is out, and anywhere he want?
I would say the next meeting, not going to think about that.
I would, I would suggest that you, you do that, if you want to take a vote and do that, but I, you know...
Well, excuse me, mayor, it might be better until that the next council votes on it, because they're going to have a meeting on January the tenth.
But you're going to have to, we're going to want someone to take that, to take your place?
Well, in the interim, Tim's going to, our, our motion allowed Tim, excuse me, our, our motion allowed Tim to actually write the contract, I mean, so. I don't know what's going to happen between the, January the thirtieth and January the tenth, that we would need a councilman to be...
Well, I don't want to put words in Tim's mouth, but he said...
Because of the, so what you're saying is, since he can't start anyway until the ninth, no harm, no, is that what I'm hearing here?
He's not going to start till the ninth. The guy's on a trip, he's, he's, he said, he said, if we let him know after the meeting on January twenty-seventh, that's, that's enough time for him to put it on his calendar, but he's not going to start until the ninth anyway.
I mean, December, sorry, December, or you said January?
January, January the ninth, is as soon as...
Or the December twenty-seventh meeting, you can look at the contract then?
Right.
Okay.
And if, and then we can say, "Yep, that's what we want to do," and then we can actually sign the contract, and he'll start on January the ninth.
Fred, are you the only one that's seen this here? Councilman Simpson?
No, no, no. Sorry, Bill, can't talk right now on this.
They allow him to.
No.
So, best way we would actually take action is on the twenty-seventh, when we get the contract, or when we get the proposed contract. So, that's...
I have a question, then. If we do that, didn't you leave it open for the next council to come in, and they would be able to restart that process, wouldn't they? For attorneys?
I don't understand.
I mean, are we on the twenty-seventh voting to accept him? Okay.
Or not?
Okay, well...
Well, now, the new council comes in, they can, they can actually vote.
Well, I know, they can, they can vote that down and start all over if they want to.
No, but they can vote completely down and do away with it altogether.
Well, I'm just thinking of the other, but, okay.
So, so in essence, then, what Fred did is act like the, the Police Committee that looked at applications, and we made a red rendition, so that's essentially what Fred has done. He has looked, he has scrutinized them, and he has recommended someone for approval or disapproval. Am I correct in saying that?
Per your authorization.
Yes, I'm just, just summarizing.
I mean, that's, that's one man's opinion, that's, I'm not in charge.
I understand.
I'm not milking this cow, I'm just holding the bucket, you know? So, if, if you want to, I mean, I thought that's what we wanted to do.
No, I'm just summarizing what was done.
Well, I need to ask a question, in regard to the contract, will you have hard copies, or do you want it on the iPad?
I guess you can put it on the iPad, it'd be fine.
Okay.
I mean, it's going to come electronically to Tim, so we can...
Okay. Then I'll provide it, then.
He's going to have it by tonight sometime, he said to send it to you by the end of the day.
And just so that y'all are aware, I, I'm not going to try to review it for the substance, I'm going to review it for the legality.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. To make sure that y'all's interest is covered, not necessarily to say, "This is the direction you want to go in terms of the investigation."
Well, this, this thing is so close, and I don't understand the rush, I mean, my goodness, the, the new council is going to be here within a couple of weeks, and, and if you said they could vote it down, or accept it, or what have you, why are we rushing to get it done by the first of, first of the year? I don't understand. We've been all this time.
I don't accept the fact that we're rushing, for one thing, and I, I'm a city council until the end of the year, and I have a job to do, and I'm going to do it.
I don't mind doing my job, but, you know, it's kind of like the mention. I don't mind doing my job, but, you know, it's kind of like we mentioned, you like this fellow, okay, or this person, or this gentleman, somebody else might like this one. We could be into a vote next meeting. Of whether we want that one, or whether we accept the contract from him, I don't understand.
So you're saying that you wanted to view all three and vote on who you thought?
No, I mean, is, I'm not telling Fred's expertise in it, but that's a possibility.
Well, Bobby, what do you want to do?
Please, what do you want to do? I haven't heard anything on any of them yet. Other than, he didn't want to do the job, he didn't want to be the mediator or what have you.
Well, the one thing, one thing that I can say is that I was told to hurry. I was told it was a rush before the end of the year, that's what I was told. So what's the rush? I don't know, you all tell me. I was told, get this done and get this done quickly, and so that's what I did. And I can tell you, I've reviewed the three, and they were all good. They were all good. None local. So...
I got a question. And it's just for Tim. How legally bound am I after my tenure in two weeks to entertain this investigation? On what level am I still bound? Is this KRS investigation? Is this a Bardstown Council witch hunt-type investigation, or what the hell is it? Am I bound to, by the law, to entertain this investigation in two weeks?
You mean if somebody comes to you and asks you questions?
Yeah, to get the hell off my property.
Well, you can, you don't have to answer questions from anybody.
So I don't have to entertain them because it's not a criminal investigation?
Unless you're subpoenaed or...
By judge.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to talk to a person.
So I'm not bound by council and all this stuff?
What I would suggest doing is, if you have an attorney whose opinion you trust, I'd ask him that question.
Okay. I'm just curious where I stand in two weeks. I'm sure there's people here that's going to be not here, would probably like to know where they stand in two weeks to, if I'm obligated to this investigation.
Bobby, I'm going to go back and ask you, what, what do you want to do? I'm still not sure what you want to do. As opposed to what we talked about doing at the next meeting? You sound like you didn't want to go there, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify what route you think is...
Well, it just appears, and just like I said, it seems like we're just rushing to get this thing done. I don't understand why we're rushing to get it done. And, and, I mean, I don't, I don't mind voting on it one way or the other, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, I'll give it my vote when it happens. We all voted to have an investigation, but I, I just don't see why we, let's investigate. Let him investigate. But you're talking about that it's going to, if, if, if we vote to investigate, what happens January the second or the third, and the other council will say, "Hey, we don't want to, we're going to throw this out, we don't want to do it." What do we gain? What have we done?
So you want us to do nothing?
I don't mind listening to what we got, what we found out to this point. I don't know any more than I know that when we voted to let's have an investigation. Other than, we're going to get a contract, and it may be $2,000 to $5,000, and it may be more, we don't know. I agree with Fred on one point, that we need to hurry this along. I, we do, Bobby, we got city employees affected here, you got gag order, whatever they want to call it, in effect, impeding the operations in the city. It needs to speed along, get this thing out of the way. Or we dump it in the new council's lap, whichever one we want to do. But I'm, I'm afraid, let's move this thing along, get it out of the way, get it out of the way. I guess just... Not to answer your question, but we got, you got a plan, you done did what we're going to do, so let's do it. That, that's what you want.
I say move forward too, Fred, because I hate to use the word "pack-a-gate," but we need to go ahead and find out who the perpetrator or perpetrators were, we need to go ahead and have it investigated. I was really hoping to have it investigated before this council ended its term, but that's obviously not going to happen.
Nobody, nobody's timeline.
Yeah, I understand that.
You're right there.
I understand that. Okay, let's move on. Cemetery D's, that's Stephanie Crowe, one grave site. Guthrie and Julie Wilson, transfer only. Frank and Bridget Wilson, transfer only. Betty C. Wilson, transfer only. Julie W. Garrett, transfer only. And Kathleen Garrison, one grave site. And if it's okay, I'll adopt the motion by unanimous consent. And thank you all. And then Patrick, is it Karen?
Karen.
Karen, okay. Water treatment plant is twenty years anniversary. That's pretty good. And number fifteen, I'll accept a motion to adjourn this meeting. So moved. All in favor? Motion's done. Chair?